I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose rule the liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to everyone, please make sure their cell phones are turned off or on vibrate. Anyone who wants to speak during audience participation, please come up to the podium, state your name and where you live, and we give you five minutes to do so. I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Can I get a motion?
Make the motion, seven o'clock meeting, call in.
Thank you, Lance. Second?
One second.
Thank you. Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I get approval for the minutes from the February tenth, two thousand twenty-five public hearing and also regular meeting?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as they were presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Correspondents, Christine.
A draft copy of the minutes from the public hearing and regular meeting of February tenth, two thousand twenty-five have been distributed. I received the New York State Department of Health Water Operations Report for January two thousand twenty-five from Frank Valentino, Jr. On February nineteenth, I received a letter from Friends of the Otisville School to be forwarded to the mayor and board members requesting to waive the fees for permits. Do you want me to read that now or later on in the agenda?
You can read it now, sure.
Okay. Uh, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, to the village board. The Friends of the Otisville School Incorporated will be requesting permits for upcoming work on the old school building located at twenty-one School Street, Otisville, New York, one oh nine six three. These permits will be requested for, one, an elevator and two, second and third floor HVAC installation. At this time, we would like to ask the village board to waive the fees for these permits. As a nonprofit organization that is renovating a local building into a community center that serves the residents of the Village of Otisville, we hope you will consider our request. Thank you sincerely, Friends of the Otisville School Incorporated. We also received confirmation from the Orange County Civil Service Department that Javier Rojas is qualified to be building inspector. Mayor Carey and Village Clerk Apollo, myself, received a memo from Trustee Logan regarding the completion of her quarterly review of the bank statements. We have received payment for the Otisville prison water bill in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents. I think they uh used, ended up using about seventy-one percent of our water this year. And we also received the franchise payment for this year in the amount of nine thousand six hundred twenty dollars and eighty-six cents, which is down again this year from last year. This year it was down three point eight percent, which is not as bad as last year. Last year, I think it was down over ten percent. That's all I have.
Thanks, Christine. Uh, John, DPW report.
Yeah, I've been working on the storms, trying to keep up with everything. We're having some issues trying to get some salt. Um, we ordered it two weeks ago. It was supposed to come in last Friday, never showed up. I called this morning, the lady says they told her it should be here Wednesday. I will keep everybody apprised, we're down to their bones, but we're doing the best we can. We dropped truck one off this morning down to start collision, get fixed. Um, new tires on truck two. No new word on the new truck that we have ordered. It's supposed to be going in the shop and working on. Um, Frank worked on the annual tonnage report for the county, sent that out last week. Frank and myself have been getting the information that the engineers need for the MS four report. The last ice, during the ice storm, we had a tree come down, took the power line out going from sanitarium to the booster pump station. Took right off the building, now the building off the pole. Of course, for some reason, now I've been testing the generators once a week. Let them run. When it came time for the generator to run, it did not want to run. We tried everything that we could that night to get it to run, she didn't want to run. Uh, so we ended up, because I called O N R at uh two thirty in the morning, I, Trish there from O N R, she answered the phone. She got crews out there, but they weren't able to get anything done until later on in the day, so.
So one thing I want to talk to you super quick about, we Orange and Rockland puts out a listing of who lost power, like how many residents lost power during the ice storm. The only person to lose power was our, power was our water plant. But for whatever reason on the list, priority wasn't, was not a priority. So I just want to check that for next time because that's our water supply, so that.
Yeah, I told Trish, what I had on the phone is for our booster pump station to feed the state prison, and she noted that, so. But the crew that came wasn't a regular O N R crew, it was one of the crews they contract out to.
Okay.
Um, so we ended up getting the power back. We had um, heat power came and looked at the generator. Uh, we got the building today, I was going over it, and doesn't really say, I gotta call him, see what the guy found. He, you know, said he checked the fluids and stuff, but he never really put into what was the problem. And I need to know what the problem was, the generator, because that was four hundred bucks, I don't know. Is that something that means it's a prison? I don't know.
I don't know. There, there's been a couple times recently where things went out at the booster pump station and we did not build the prison, so.
But just like, uh, but I gotta get hold of the prison.
He's gonna have to do gel paint, he doesn't know.
Um, when we go to the, we get to get a hold of the prison, see if they can get somebody in there, if they have the tree crew, they have the bucket truck to clear more trees out because we got a lot of dead ash trees. And we get another windstorm, it could happen again. Yeah, alright, that's all I have.
Um, just get me a contact at the truck place, who you guys are talking to. Because it's kind of absurd at this point, honestly, so just give me a contact and I'll call once they move in.
Okay, I'll be ready. Alright, I'll give you your number.
Thank you. Okay, tell them I hope. Kurt, I'll, Karen, what do you got?
I don't have a lot because we didn't have a meeting since your last meeting. We do currently have um, a job posted on Indeed in the Highway Department for a driver mechanic operator, which will be posted until next Friday or seventh.
Thanks. Kurt, what do you got?
Well, we're still waiting for snow to go slay right out.
What's that you wish for?
Last one kind of got iced out, honestly.
Wouldn't want to slay right out.
No, that's, that would be dangerous. I couldn't walk down my driveway. The chief has been in contact with the superintendent at Otisville Directional. Right now, there's nothing to worry about there. We have had several complaints about the CO's parking on Sanitarium Old Mountain.
In Bowden.
In Bowden. Just contact us, contact the police department, but they've been cooperative.
To pick it up.
They've been cooperative, and uh, we've offered up the senior center parking, our parking lot, uh, from the park over at the municipal lot, so. When I went by there today, when they were out there, it was thinner than normal. But if there is a problem, just contact the police department, we'll, we'll go out and we've been talking to them since this began.
There's no time woman on contacting you since I texted you and the chief at like ten thirty at night because that's when my complaint came in. I have to pick.
I mean, that, once it starts getting dark, they kind of close up, John.
Yeah, this was for the next morning, but that's fine. Nothing, nothing, nothing bad, it was just.
I mean, they did have cones out when the road, we've had them remove those. They agreed, you know, they were agreed with, uh, we had a complaint about in Bowden, so they were directing traffic out of there. They, they've been orderly.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. I'm gonna skip down here to trustee reports. Bob, I'm gonna start with you tonight.
Good.
Wake up.
Not a lot. I, I noticed that um, I haven't done my quarterly capes on. And I'll do that. Actually, I kind of slipped my mind. Um, I'll do, am I holding you up now Diane? You're doing episode then, right?
No, I, I did the bank practice for the quarter that I was assigned. I didn't go back and do your quarter.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I just want to make sure I wasn't holding.
But they're done.
Okay, so I'll get them done. Uh, the, there's a planning board meeting, the next one is the fifth of March, if they have anything on the agenda. Reportedly, they haven't had anything on the agenda for the past several months. Last uh, meeting, February fifth, they had the board members from the old school community center come in to ask them basically just a summation of uh, of what's been going on, and uh, there was no issues to speak of. So if they have anything on the agenda, I'll check it out for the next upcoming meeting on the fifth of, of March. And um, the old school community center has a online tricky tray on the eighth of, Saturday the eighth. So for details, you can go online, check it out. I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Brian, what do you got?
Oh, okay, so I don't have anything for the chief right now. He did not give me his call sheet. I don't know, Christine, do you have?
No.
Anything, so I don't have anything to report. With the fire department, uh, streetlights, Vinnie just sent me two more completions. And then go figure, as soon as I went in to see which ones. It locked me out, and I just told Christine that, guess what, I have to go through that whole process again with trying to get readmin. Go see what he actually completed, so. With the streetlights, if anybody notices any out, let us know so that I can contact Vinnie and keep working on those.
Is the one stolen, are you already at the back?
Mm-hmm. That one is not replaced yet?
No, and also we wanted to add one to.
I don't know if that was part of the original nine.
It might not have been. I think this was just.
I know we were working on the main drag, get all that done, and there was.
Highland, that really looks awesome. I'd be the first one to say that.
I'm not sure where the other one was. That's why I was going on the look, then stupid thing kicked me out, so.
And I wanted to see what we could do about getting another light down the municipal lot, shooting the back part.
That was supposed to be on there.
Okay.
So that, that should be, it's a little bit more.
Yeah, during the last couple storms, I haven't noticed any lights out, they've been very, especially ones that are all the LED, it's so much nicer to plow and.
I actually asked Micromano to look at the bulb over here for the flag, because it's the old sodium vapor light, to do something LED so we can, it will match, because it looks.
I'll see if I can orange, keep that one on there right away.
The one on Seavolt.
Seavolt.
Between, well, it's kind of in front of sixteen and then down to eighteen, Seavolt. I know one day, months back when I was here, you went out to check the the numbers on the pole, but that's never been done.
Yeah, I have to see if that's part of the original nine, which I'm not sure if that was part, you know, the ones that we didn't have to pay for. I don't think that was part of it. I think I focused on Highland.
Right, but it's not working properly. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, yeah. That's the one that's got double poles. There was an accident a couple years ago. And the old pole is still there, but, and the, the lights never really worked properly since.
I'll see if they can look at that between sixteen and eighteen.
Yeah.
They probably still have all that in there. As far as.
Closest to sixteen, I think.
The poles probably, does it still, if it has other utilities on it, we're not gonna do anything with the pole.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure of that.
Yeah, but the light.
It's a county road, so we can't, you know, force it, but uh.
Yeah, I'll have them take a look at that, see if they put it maybe, put it in that on. Okay. Fire department, no, lights good. Uh, did meet with the Teamsters Union to go over the upcoming contract with them. Still ongoing, made some pretty good headway, and we have another meeting set for March thirteenth in a couple of weeks to hopefully nail down some things there and get that sucker in motion. That's really, uh, that's, that's all I, oh, my quarterly review assignments, I'm not, I think you reported for me, that that's all done. I'm all up to date on all that.
If I didn't, it's. Okay, Lance, what do you got?
Alright, I'm gonna start my um, quarter review assignment. I just come in today and finish it. I just gotta send you the email. So that's all, that was done today, I came in, I did finish. Not much, but um, if you go to the park and it's all wet, and it's too wet to walk in, pretty advised not to drive the car in the mud, so, you know, make sure people realize that. It's so muddy and rainy out right now, not rainy, but water that um, they're trying to keep their park drives.
Somebody took their car?
No, but if you, if you, if you walk and you sink in, don't try to drive your car there.
Yeah.
And you can see that they got kind of stuck and it cleaned up so.
In the parking lot, you mean?
Yeah.
That's uh.
I, I, I.
Isn't it so bad that we need to close the parking lot?
What, did that rain that day? No ice? It shouldn't have been there. I wouldn't have been there. I was driving by.
So they weren't stuck in the mud spinning their tires, they were stuck on ice?
Stuck on the ice and then into the mud, got us some with water and, don't go there.
You had me thinking they were in the park.
No, 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 they're trying to get to the park. They're trying to get to the park to go walk around, but they got stuck there, so. I hope not.
James and Diane, you were just.
I was telling Mike, it's too muddy, don't go there. That's all I had now, just hope you pay attention to the weather, so they don't get stuck in the town, the building's property, you may have help, you don't know.
We'll call Kurt next time it happens.
We'll call the contractor for him.
That's all I have, just.
At their expense, at their expense.
Yes, yes.
And John, they need some salt? You go much speed, tons of salt. Get you open.
Diane, what you got?
Those are John.
Okay, not a whole lot. Um, CBA, their next meeting is Tuesday, March the fourth. They do meet whether they have anything on the agenda or not, because they use that for training sessions in order to meet the mandate for training. Um, I would really encourage the planning board to do that, because it's an easy way for them to get their training hours in. Um, I did, in my newsletter article, my personal article, I mentioned that vacancy on the CBA, treating more retail people, the.
Absolutely. Someone step up.
Um, Community Advisory Board, as you know, was supposed to meet on February the eighteenth. That was canceled indefinitely because of the ongoing um picketing outside the state facility. To the best of my knowledge, and Kurt kind of just reinforced that, no Otisville staff are actually on strike. They're just doing informational picketing in support of the uh, the, the facilities that are, and to try to activate change within the system, so. It's not something I think that's going to end really quickly, so I did reach out to the superintendent and suggested that perhaps she wants to just um, skip this quarter's meeting and we'll wait and do it in April, so. I imagine that's what will happen. I did send some articles to Heidi for the newsletter and, and sent them on to the mayor as well, so he could take a look. There's an article in there that I sent her on groundwater guardianship, and just so everybody knows, in every issue, we're supposed to have something to educate the public, and that's to meet one of our MS four mandates. So I do try to have it either on groundwater or conservation or something, so it's not that, you know, I'm such a zealot for these things, but there's a, a good reason that we have to have those in there. And we also already talked about the quarterly review assignments. I did do the, uh, reviewed the bank recs for all of our five regular accounts. The accountant and reported on that, they, and they were excellent, as always. She has not yet completed the reconciliations for capital and T and A accounts, but rather than put that on the next person, I said I'd come back as soon as she does, and that's supposed to be in the next couple of weeks. So I'll come back and take a look at that. They don't take long to do, to check over, because um, there's so little activity in there. That's all I have for now.
Alright, thanks Diane.
Diane, real quick, is there anything from the Lily?
Nope, the mayor and I have talked about it. We haven't, I haven't heard a word.
I called after Diane and I spoke, and they gave me, I know they came out with online, which is in our newsletter. Their pancake breakfast.
Probably the opening day.
Opening day. Our, our newsletter is, and I'm not gonna say this, but it's um, almost officially done. It's printed out, but they do have something that they came out with that I shared online. They are supposed to be having a meeting, and I did, as soon as they come up with a date, they're gonna reach out to you, Diane. So I just wanted to speak with, uh, with them, because I know Brian has a request in that we've been waiting to talk about, which I know is C coming up here on the whole business, and I just wanted to. But just some changes that I had to make to this, that's all.
Wasn't just, because I.
When is opening day?
Was that?
When is opening day?
So I was gonna ask, I don't know if they reached out to any one from there either.
Opening day is April nineteenth, which obviously we're all invited for.
I'll be with it, alright.
But I'll let them officially do that. Pancake breakfast is March thirtieth. And uh, the end of season picnic is June fourteenth, if you need to know that.
John, off the top of your head, do you know when our trash week is?
It's the, um, yep. Leave my calendar here.
He's the first to the May list, right?
It's May fifth through the ninth.
Okay.
So where's that?
Yeah, um, one day, I mentioned the, their pancake breakfast.
Yep.
Is it, um, you reached out to the fire company, I talked to Tony and, and Rob. When they're renting the hall, we need to know the dates, not, so like the last storm, I just happened to go up there to clean up before so, before it froze, but normally we don't clean it up right away.
I have a question for you, since you want to bring this up publicly. You ready for my question?
Yeah.
Why in the world would you need to schedule when that's our building, right? That's a village.
Because usually we don't do it the day of the storm or the night of the storm. We go next day.
Clean it up every time? I didn't bring it up.
No, no, that's fine.
The same. I don't know where you're getting the schedule from, they have a new president, I understand that, but to me, like I went up there one day and I went to go out and I couldn't even get out the back door. Because there was a plow mark, but then there was this much snow in between it, so.
Normally, if I used to try to keep it, if it was like, who, on Sunday, and then you had no, we knew that was going on, we wouldn't do anything until Monday.
Right.
With it.
Let me put this one, if someone pulls into that parking lot because they're renting, and I'll, I'll try to get you a list, if someone falls, who are they suing?
Yeah, okay, make sure to clean up every storm, I have to.
I, listen, I would prioritize it for the purpose of, listen, obviously you gotta do the streets first, because we all have to get out, and I don't wanna, but.
Is that something that if somebody, if they rent from the fire company, that they can send something to Christine and then, or write directly to you?
No, I think it was, yeah, you look, how we, how we used to do it, when I was a member there, I would know the calendar, so I would just make sure everything was saying it. For a while there, Tony would text me and say, hey, just so you know, we have hall rental here and here. So we make sure that there was no.
There's this different.
There's no issue.
Yeah, that's what it breaks down.
We just don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna have an issue where we don't get to it and then there's a hall rental.
Right, well, obviously, they're gonna do the streets and the municipal parking lots and things first.
Hundred percent.
I don't think John is saying that they don't do it at all.
No.
It's just.
They had called the day that it snowed because they had a rental up there, and they understand the fact that you have to plow the roads and you have a priority first. I don't have them sharing a schedule with you, but on the other hand, I don't want someone to say, well, why aren't we plowing the lot? It's a village lot. I mean, listen, I would hope that we're prioritizing it a little bit, so if there was a fire during a storm, that at least the firemen can get it.
No, we, we, no, we always clean up prior inside during every storm.
This is the back part.
Yeah, that's the way.
And, and if there's, if I'm understanding John correctly, if there is an event, they do make it a priority, so.
I got it. I think everything, I think everything worked out the day she reached out. She just didn't reach out to you directly, she reached out to me, but I'll talk to her about getting you something, fair enough. Um, and the only other thing that I wanted to say when John brought up about salt, um, I learned when I went down to this training in the city for Association of Towns that we're on a salt emergency, and a lot of municipalities cannot get salt.
No.
There was actually a state agency there asking if anyone needs assistance. I didn't know that we were short on salt, till I came back here and kind of.
Well, at that point, we were, we weren't having an issue.
Waiting to get delivery, but I think it's trick like that.
Where do you get the mix?
Huh?
Do you get straight salt?
The straight salt, yeah, we mix ourselves.
The sand, do we have sand?
Yeah, we have sand. I have sand, salt, mixed, I got enough to get probably two more storms. I got enough salt for maybe.
Not to be any more storms.
And just tell me what we got.
Swish, I did.
Okay? Tell me what I have in hand, because I did, you know?
That's it.
Um, okay, um, just to go down my list. As far as MS four goes, Diane was brought up. Um, I had a meeting with the engineer about MS four to do some updating with them. They are gonna find out if we can put stuff on our website. Also, I know the information for MS fours on our website, but as far as the stuff that we put in our newsletter to also share on our website, might, I'm hoping counts for what we need to do as part of MS four. And for those that don't know anything about MS four, feel free to go to our website, you can learn about it. Defensive driving, we have nineteen people signed up to date. We have room for forty. Uh, that's gonna be April fifth. Reach out to Village Hall here, or you can uh, email me and I'll get you on the list. Uh, the newsletter, Heidi turned the newsletter around pretty quickly. There's just a couple things that I wanted to change. Probably by the end of the week, it will be done. Um, I did come up with something, uh, which Kate was working on, also Christine helped out with, was for local businesses, support local. So we went through and kind of made a list of all local businesses for Otisville. Now, I'm sure there's something that we missed, um, and I say that because I'm sure there's something that we missed. Uh, we have a little thing on the bottom, if you want to be added to the list, just the promotion thing. No, we're not trying to tell you to go eat here or do that, but just keep it local, um, to village. I'm sure we're gonna get people that are, uh, like the coffee shop that get their mail from Otisville, uh, but are not in the village. I'm sure we're gonna get people that have a village ad or a Otisville address that are gonna be, wanna be included in that, but just something to put out there as a, as something different to support local business. As Brian said, we did have two meetings so far with the union. Our next one, as he said, is March thirteenth. I think we went through a lot today. We just had one right before this meeting, actually. I think we went through a lot today, uh, hoping to get more information on the budget side for next year's budget, uh, and we'll have it for that, um, March thirteenth meeting. Let's see. I met with Senator Sgophus's office about doing a couple projects. Uh, one of the projects being, we have four roofs, if I'm saying that right, roofs. As in the pavilion, uh, the salt shed, what else was?
Wildhouse.
The wildhouse, and what was the fourth one? Your office in the back, your office in the back. Uh, about seeing if we can get some grant money to, uh, replace and fix. We did get three estimates from three different companies, um, so we already have that, but working on that. Uh, also spoke to them about um, getting some funding for some cameras to update the firehouse system. I don't know exactly how old that is, I think it's like around, at least part of it has to be at least probably as old as it was here, at least uh, eight to ten years old, I'm gonna estimate, if not.
Probably older.
The cameras are, but the system was updated in between them. Only reason I know that is because you looked up the guy that did it. Also, uh, I spoke to him and I talked to DPW about getting some estimates on the pole barn. We currently have none of our vehicles inside, uh, our garbage truck, all of our plow vehicles, they all sit out back outside. Nothing is under protection of a roof, so I wanted to see about getting some estimates and seeing about possibly getting some grant money to work on a pole barn of some sort out back here. Um, don't know how far that's gonna go, gonna work on the estimates. Gonna talk to the people probably this week and next week, and I'll give you guys a little more of an update, but um, again, we'll talk about it in detail when I get something they're writing about it. I found a neat company for light projects. I know I had reached out to our electrician, Micromano, about doing some sort of lights underneath the pavilion. Was at the Association of Towns and found a guy that actually has lights. I do need this back, but I'm gonna pass it out to you. Uh, some of these lights are free, some of these lights, um, uh, like the one Micromano actually gave us a price on, I think his price was two hundred and ten for it, uh, and this particular company funded through the state of New York, it's twenty-five dollars. Uh, how it basically works with this is you come up with a light project, you turn it in to them, it pretty much tells you here, there's three steps. You gotta give them a copy of your electric bill, which they work with Orange and Rockland, um, tax exempt certification and um, your order, and you send it in and you get approval for it. So it's pretty neat. I'll pass it to you and then I'll pass it over here. What else am I missing on my list? Um, I do need an executive session for a employee issue, and we're gonna do that at the end. I'm just watching the time here, because we're gonna have the attorney on the phone for that. So that being said, let's just go through some of this this year. Uh, quarterly review assignments, I'm not gonna go through these, you guys can kind of read on your own, but I do wanna skip down to um, to see. Right now, Little League has not handed their paperwork in for the fields. Um, that's kind of what I called them about the other day. If you want, I did ask this, um, I did ask, is there gonna be any conflicts between, uh, what, um, this tri, how do you, what do you, what's the name of your team, the tri-state, what? this tri, how do you, what do you, what's the name of your team, the tri-state, what?
Tri-state chaos.
Okay, travel baseball team. Um, I asked if there's a conflict, but I wanted Little League to hand their stuff in, so. Not that I have a problem with Brian's stuff, but I wanted to get theirs and then maybe talk about it together so there's no conflict. And I'm hoping between now and when that happens, our next meeting, I'm hoping they have a meeting, and I'm hoping Diane will have some information from that for us also, so. If you guys don't mind, I'd like to push it in on the meeting. I do want you to talk about it, but let's do that, let's talk about it. What are you looking to do?
Literally what all the other travel teams have to do, it's come down, two days a week, practice on the fields and they have a tournament that they're gonna have on January, or June, sorry, June, uh, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, which I already know is not a conflict with Kent and the Little League, because their end of the season picnic is the fourteenth.
Okay.
So there's nothing there, and just kind of same thing as always, any travel team that comes down, we work it out with the Little League and make sure there's no conflict. And this is a team that is comprised of eight local kids from here in Otisville and Menasink, and five kids from like Cornwall and Pennsylvania, so it's like all over. Um, it's the fourteen U team, so it's gonna be utilizing the big field, which the last time I spoke with the Little League, they don't have a team this year to utilize that field.
That's the A field.
That's the A field, yes. So I really don't think there's gonna be a conflict at, at all with the Little League.
Okay.
But I respect waiting, if you want to wait, it's fine.
Okay. No, I, listen, that gives us more information, I didn't want to, I wanted to hear it from you.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a big team.
I'm gonna let Diane talk, two seconds, I just want to throw this at you. September twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth is the Town Mount Hope's bicentennial, and.
September?
September, twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth.
I don't think we're around it all.
Just making sure because we're gonna be, they're gonna be asking to utilize some of our stuff, so I threw that out to Little League the other day and I just want to throw it out to you before they come to us.
They, yeah, they would probably be more affected because that's their opening weekend of fall.
Okay. Diane, sorry, what were you gonna say?
I don't read them. The look on your face.
Apparently, apparently you covered it.
I just like to throw those dates out there, that's all, probably should have put them on our calendar, but it is in the newsletter.
Well, we did approve that, I think, at the last meeting, didn't we?
Okay.
The chaos?
No.
No, no, no.
Bicentennial.
Oh, bicentennial, bicentennial. I just want to make sure conflicts with that, that's all I say. Okay, all right, moving right along. New business. Um, friends of the Otisville School requesting to waive billing permit fees. Um, I don't have our attorney here to advise Mr. Bob in the end that he is obviously part of the old school, as in the president, so I would probably say that it would be fair to say that that would be a conflict of interest.
Just for the record, I'm not the president.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you. Allison is our president.
Okay, I'm sorry. You sounded relieved. I, I think. I, I think.
You are an officer, though?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I would recuse myself then in this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Avoiding officer.
My bad, secretary votes a president in the newsletter, and you must have caught it before, okay. That being said, um, do we want Christine to read our correspondence, what they're looking for again, so it's fresh in your mind?
Elevator.
Can you read it, the correspondence again?
Uh, do I read the whole thing, or they're, they're looking, okay, Friends of the Otisville School Incorporated will be requesting permits for upcoming work on the old school building located at twenty-one School Street, Otisville, New York. These permits will be requested for one, an elevator, and two, second and third floor HVAC installation. At this time, we would like to ask the village board to waive the fees for these permits as a nonprofit organization that is renovating a local building into a community center that serves the residents of Village of Otisville. We hope you will consider our request.
I'm gonna let you go, Diane, first, because I know we spoke about this, but I'm gonna let you say what you want to say.
Well, and I did share my thoughts with, uh, the other members, so I don't know if they want to go first, but I, I mean, I'd be happy to.
No, you go, you, um, you did, you shared, I read.
Um, I certainly fully support waiving all of the building department fees. We've done it in the past, and I think it's the appropriate thing to do with the service that they're providing to the community, so long as they understand that we can't waive inspection fees, attorney fees or engineering fees that we might incur, because it's a big project, there's, that's gonna be involved. But the, uh, permit fees themselves, I certainly support waiving all of them.
What?
Yeah, Diane, um, she sent it out, um, as long as, we don't have a lot in the community to waive that, so if we do waive it, I have no problem with that, as long as they understand that it's for a community, not for personal use. I know it's not personal, but I still gotta say it, I don't know, I have no problem waiving.
That was my, my question, when you said, um, services for the community, besides the preschool, what else is in there?
Hold on.
Oh.
I don't want to involve, that's public participation, so I know this is gonna be very hard to do.
I know.
But I don't want anyone from the audience.
Really wish to, yeah, talk first, but, so, but it's fine.
Okay.
It's just because I, I don't know what else is for the community down there.
Or at all, I don't.
Well, they're still in development.
Correct, that's, that's why I'm like.
You can ask your fellow boarder next to you.
Right.
What do we have going on down there, Bob?
Well, that's basically it, it's still in the rehabilitation s- stage.
Is there a mission statement or anything like?
Well, yeah, sure.
There's a whole, there's a whole.
And, no, once, once the rehabilitation is complete, there's been a lot of, uh, people that have been reaching out for different types of uses, but, uh, we're precluded from really doing much more than we're doing now because of permitting situation and stuff. We just have the permits now for the preschool. So, uh, as we go along, as the rehabilitation is completed, uh, there'll be, you know, a lot more going on. Exactly what, I couldn't tell you right now because, uh, people are still, you know, you can't really do anything until it's done, but Allison would know more than I do about this, but people have been reaching out to us, I know, for use of the property, the stage area, the gym area, for, um, like for affairs, for, um, I think there was an interest in it for a youth football basketball league, um, it's quite a thing, I mean, it's just one of, once, it's like if you build it, they will come, you know, I mean, students from baseball.
Are these the last major permits you need?
Probably not. We still, you know, like, if, if this, if this, uh, does the whole, all rest of the HVAC, we'll be awful lucky, it probably won't, we're concentrating now on the elevator, HVAC to the second floor, and then anything else we have would be like graded, but, uh, I doubt if this next grant's gonna complete the entire rehabilitation, no.
No, I mean, but more permits, that's what I mean. Do you see more permits?
Not that many.
Right, let's say, you gotta be winding down the permits, no?
Yeah, like Allison said in her letter, just basically the Bane Project will be for the elevator and HVAC for the second floor.
Got it.
That shouldn't be, yeah, and I don't know how complicated the elevator is, I mean, uh, but that's, it's basically those two things, elevator and HVAC, so whatever permits they would require.
That's it.
Not much.
Can I answer your question? If it doesn't?
Well, to, to first.
Here's what I'd like to do, I want to postpone this to the next meeting, we'll let Allison come up during public participation and explain some stuff, and then the next meeting will.
Cause I'm just curious too, is there any other source of like revenue coming in, like with the preschool, I don't know, that's helping out a lot.
Listen, very simply, can I get a motion to postpone this to the next board meeting?
Yes.
Can we just postpone it until after audience participation?
That's it.
Do you want to wait, or do you want to answer at the end?
Either or, I'm fine with either or.
I want to wait, because I have an executive session.
If we're gonna wait, then what I would suggest is that when you have time.
Read it.
The, um, they have a variance, and in the variance, there's a lot of different things delineated as to what hopefully they will have in there. And then they also had to get a, a conditional use permit from the planning board, and that gives you a specific things as to what's going to go on. So that would help, I think, clear it in your head.
Yeah.
So can I get a motion to postpone this, what's the, what's the board meeting date, the next one? It would be Monday.
March tenth.
March tenth.
I'll second it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Who made the first motion?
Me. Um, what's that? You could have made it, that's fine.
Brian. Trustee.
All right, let's see here, let's go down here, um, surplus, okay, so, we talked about this a while back, we have a new chief's vehicle, which we could talk about that too, I guess, but I just really wanted to talk about this. We have two vehicles that need to be surplus. One is the two thousand eleven Dodge forty-five hundred dump truck, it's the red one sitting on the side of the building. And the other one is the, um, fire department vehicle, I believe it's a Tahoe, I believe it's currently being used for the fire police. We replaced Rob's vehicle, um, which in return, kind of, we bumped down to get rid of one, that was always the intent and purpose was to get rid of one. Uh, his old vehicle was in better shape than the fire police vehicle, to my understanding.
This is fire police or the EMS one?
This is the fire police, the white one, that's sitting outside of the building. Which hopefully when we get the pole barn, I'll fix, we won't have any vehicles sitting outside.
I'm not sure if two thousand eight is the correct year, we couldn't get a, uh, Tony wasn't sure, and we couldn't get ahold of Rob today, so, um, we may have to amend the year, but I know that it's a Tahoe.
Well, it's a Tahoe currently being used as a fire police vehicle, contrary to whatever year. Um, I just want to take them, uh, put them online to, uh, auction them off. We're gonna stick with the current company that we're using, uh, instead of going to the other one that we discussed, seeing what we can get out of them, and hopefully get them out of here sometime in March. I know DPW has been asking about a new mower, and I'm hoping with the money from that, uh, Dodge vehicle out there, we'll have money to talk about to do something with, kind of like what we did the last time, we got rid of a bunch of stuff. And as far as the fire vehicle, whatever we get, we go back in their budget. Um, so that being said, can I get a motion to surplus, uh, the two vehicles, the one DPW, uh, two thousand eleven Dodge forty-five hundred dump truck, and the fire police vehicle currently being used as the fire police vehicle?
Twenty-fourteen.
Tahoe, okay, twenty-fourteen?
Twenty-fourteen?
Twenty-fourteen.
Oh, wow.
Okay. Can I get?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, I'm gonna, hopefully when we get this, um, straightened out, we're gonna get the truck down here. Uh, hopefully we're gonna find a spot somewhere out back, hopefully we're gonna get the auction people in here, and you're gonna have two spots free because minus the red truck. God willing, someone's gonna buy it somewhere long and far away, and we're gonna get rid of two vehicles, which, uh, as soon as we sell them, we'll approve it. Uh, just because they're on the auction block doesn't mean we have to get rid of them, but once we approve it, we'll take the plates and insurance off, and we'll be in better shape there too. Okay, uh, motions and resolutions, what do we have for this, Christine?
Um, we, um, have, as I said, we did get, um, final approval from the Orange County Department of, um, Civil Service and Human Resources that Javier would qualify as building inspector three, which would allow him to, um, do all of the, um, you know, the annual inspections as well as issue permits and other building department inspections, so.
So basically what has happened is, as soon as he's approved for this spot, or we hire him as a spot, I will no longer be signing, uh, building permits. The engineer fees that we've been accumulating for since Lori left, which are quite large, um, will no longer be, you'll just be doing engineering stuff. We won't be paying him to look at anyone that brings a building permit in here to approve before I sign it. So, um, can I get a motion to hire Javier Building Inspector Three, to promote him to a Building Inspector Three, currently with no, um, additional money to be paid for that position to him?
Is it actually a promotion or just a change in title that would allow him to do everything?
I would probably classify it as a promotion. Um, when we originally filed for him, we filed for him to be a code enforcement slash fire inspector, not knowing that, um, he could have, at that time, we could have applied for Building Inspector Three. After going back and forth with him about his qualifications and certifications, that's kind of how this conversation sparked. So we sent it back to them and they came up with the answer of, we just have to change his title to Building Inspector Three. So technically, he'll have more responsibility, um, no question there, um, but he'll be able to do all of it.
Right.
Building inspecting, code enforcement, and, um, fire inspections, which he's already.
More responsibility, that's a promotion then, I think.
I'm not disagreeing, I haven't sat down to talk to him yet, if the conversation goes up, I'm gonna try to wait till, since we're in our budget, um, work, work it out to start our next budget, which would be June first. Um, I gotta talk to him about it.
My only concern with using the word promotion is, I think there's an implication there that there would be a monetary increase, and that's not what we're proposing.
Correct, you're right.
If we just call, what the, from what you just said, the county said just change his title, then I would think that's what we're doing, is changing his title.
He's doing all the other stuff now?
He's doing code enforcement, obviously, and, and, and fire inspections, he just started in January, yeah.
And he's working with the engineer on all the other things.
Right, so the engineer would be out of, yes. Um, I, I will, I will say this to add to it, we advertised for a building inspector. Um, we got them, the, as far as the value of what we would pay for that building inspector position, we did put it online and have people apply. Unfortunately, a lot of people weren't qualified to do it, but we're not looking to do the minimal amount of time that we were looking for. We did promote it, I believe, and I was saying this, I believe, starting salary twenty-six, twenty-six, I think it was either twenty-five or twenty-six, uh, high end, thirty-one dollars in that one, that came from the county's list, so we advertised for this job. Uh, Javier's not asking for more money, but I don't want to close the door on him if he does say, hey, now that I'm doing this and I'm doing more.
Right, that's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah, so I, I don't wanna, I want to word it the correct way, but I don't want to close the door, is what I'm trying to say.
But then that would have to come back to us to raise.
Hundred percent, absolutely, no, that wouldn't be me, that would be all of us.
I, I still feel it's just to change the title, but that's up to you.
All right, so why don't we do it as where we are changing his title to Building Inspector Three? As of right now, we are not giving any more money to him per hour.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to be discussed with him.
In, in the future, exactly.
In the, in the future, yeah.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, audience participation, we've all been waiting for this time, seven forty-eight. Anyone that wants to speak from the audience, come on up, state your name.
Apparently I need to, so, I'm not planning on it. Allison Miller, Town Mount Hope, also president of the Friends of the Otisville School Board of Directors. As you know, we did submit a letter requesting that permit fees be waived, um, this is something that we've done in the past, and that this board has, um, approved in the past with much less discussion and controversy, apparently. Um, we are, of course, a registered not-for-profit five oh one C three, we are asking for this as the organization, not certainly as a private individual. Um, there were a couple of questions that came up about what community service do we provide? As Bob Klaus said, we're still in the process of renovating, so those are, we are applying for permits to do renovations that will allow us to open to provide community service. We currently, um, are, uh, have our Little Munchkins preschool, there's renting space in there. We have, of course, been a practice field for the Little League for several years, we are, I believe, still the kickoff point for the Little League parade, although the Little League has not approached us about that, just FYI. Um, we have had, as Bob also said, several people contact us over the years about space that they would like to use. These people include local homeschooling, parent co-ops that would like a place to meet, that is bigger than some individual's home. I have had, um, parents of local athletes contact us specifically for the gym, everyone's interested in the gym, they want to use the gym for winter sports practice, girls softball practice. There was a gentleman who is dying to start a youth basketball league for our community, he's interested in the gym as soon as we have that available. We have people who want bingo, they have asked us, when are we going to be holding bingo there? We have people who want bingo, they have asked us, when are we going to be holding bingo there? Um, we've been asked about yoga classes, we have been asked about art studio space on the third floor especially because of the light that comes into the building. So these are just a few of the community services that we do anticipate offering as we are able to open the second and the third floors. We have had a mission statement since two thousand sixteen, it is posted and available on our website as well as our Facebook page. It basically speaks to the effect that our mission is to renovate the old school into a community center that provides educational, recreational, and artistic opportunities and space for the Otis Village of Otisville, Town and Mat Hope, and the greater Hudson Valley region. Because of course, we want to attract people from outside of the town and village if possible. But of course, our focus is our immediate community as well. Um, there was a question about future permits. I don't know, as Bob said, I will anticipate that one is probably the roof. The main roof of that building will need to be replaced, so that is one that I definitely anticipate. Beyond that, I do not think there will be any more big projects. That's kind of where we stand. Right now, as Diane said, we have appeared before the planning board and the zoning board multiple times for many years. We have conditional use, we have variances, they have all been approved. They state pretty clearly what the purpose is that is approved for that building as well. There was a question about what revenue do we have? Well, at this point, we have rental income from the preschool. I wanna make really clear that that rent basically covers our insurance every month, our spectrum bill, and half of our power bill. And that is it, that is bare bones. Anything else that we want to do, if we need to buy paint, if we need to buy salt for our parking lot, we have to do that out of fundraisers. So any kind of permit fees that are waived helps us even in the smallest amount. And finally, to Diane's point, yes, of course, we do understand that inspection, inspection fees, engineering fees, of course, would be extra. We're simply asking for those application fees that go with the permits to be waived at this time. I would love for you to be able to vote on this tonight. It does seem a little puzzling to me why we have to postpone to the next meeting, but if you decide to do that, of course, that's, you know, your decision as a board. So I think I tried to address all the questions, but if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Very thorough, thank you.
Are you at a point where you're ready to, to apply for these permits?
We are, so the, the elevator permit will be this week, for sure. The HVAC permit will probably be within a month, I would say, so they are on the horizon.
So if we were to not approve it, that could hold you up with your elevator permit, is what you're saying?
Well, it would if we can't apply for, I mean, I, to be honest, I'll probably just apply, I'll probably give, send in the permit application anyway, without a fee attached to it until you make a decision. We have done that in the past. I know under Lori's recommendation, she suggested that we apply for the, that we ask for the fees to be waived, kind of retrospectively. We did that the first time around and the board did approve them, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, thanks.
Anyone else, audience participation? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the bills, um, to pay the bills, not to approve the bills, to pay the bills? Uh, general sixteen thousand seventy-four dollars, quarter ten thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars and seven cents. Fire, three thousand four hundred forty dollars, forty-one cents, capital one thousand two hundred eighty dollars.
Christine, what is the capital?
That is more of the electorality for the poll barn.
So we already approved that, okay. Can I make a motion that we pay those bills?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion to go into executive session for an employee-related issue?
Sure.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, just to let everyone know that reporter does stay on while we're in executive session and, uh, yes. Yes. No, it's not dropped. Yeah, you, yeah, come on in.
If you answer all our questions, we might as well go in there.
Not just me.
No, I saw it there.
No, it's just, it's a problem that's, it's a result of, of, of.
So tired of the delays.
It was like nine dollars a bell bucket.
But like you say, it's. You put it on and melts. And it also sort of what and that freezes right back over and he's like.
Well, I just needed to just get it underneath.
Yeah.
So it lifted it a little bit and that's it took.
Probably over one.
Two days now and finally this morning I went out. Got most of it up so now you can walk up and down the driveway without getting killed. She even took every rubber mat we had and started laying in.
Yeah, I bought a lot a couple of years ago by accident. I kept buying it and then we did it. It was a little year but I got like no bad weather so we have. But I've been trying to live it more much than that much.
Well, the funniest.
But I've been trying to put it out for warmers and scrape it off so you try it and it doesn't.
The funniest thing is I have all those mats from K nine in the car. Just threw them away.
And my dog did no interest in wearing the back of that hat. You're driving me crazy.
My Chihuahua, he'd be happy to move the pad just leave him alone.
Mine and my little one's been like, I will come right, I'll be out, I'll come and pick it and then I'll like pee in the kitchen. I'm like, I'm not doing this. Cause they don't wanna go on the concrete. They don't wanna look on the end. It's like, I can't help you. You know tomorrow it's gonna start. They don't wanna go in the mud. But today, at least the top crust of some of the ice melt, so they can walk on. It wasn't so slippery, so they could walk on a little bit.
My poor turkey, he hasn't been watching the ice. He just kinda, he digs in a little bit.
I can see when I was coming home in downtown yesterday, like it's downtown, they don't really have any, they melt them mostly. So the deer were all the size of a bird. They must've been happy. They didn't get, get something so. Cause here, there's nothing, nothing. That's two, the two times I've come by a prison, there've been deer trying to cross any of those things since I'm sorry.
They're not striking.
Yeah.
So they're informational. They're not, see technically they follow. They're like.
Some more.
They're like us, we cannot strike.
Yeah.
Cause the tailor will, but there's nothing saying after hours that we can't sit outside here. And that's.
Some of them are gonna work though.
Well, that is.
For the most part, almost bill they have.
Yeah.
There's only like where.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah. They also got here, half these guys here, they're retired CEOs.
Right, I heard, I've only heard that, yeah.
Out of these guys straight.
We're probably gonna give them their test right now, so it's not gonna.
Mm.
You're gonna want my money. Fairness.
Yeah.
It'll be in here.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, and so I look at for people I know.
Mm.
And the thing about police certification in the state is you just, probably the state will take it.
Okay.
To move and then you do like a four to six week class.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kids waiting on how it works. I thought they were doing it with, but I just found a minor with an air duster here. You should talk at the school too, to a teacher. Listen, Florida, I didn't want you to take a whole two year course again. She's like, I just won't go here anymore. We're gonna take that for.
Okay.
It's friends.
Yeah, because that, that you can. Makes no sense, you know what I mean? Delay of both suspension schools and stuff. I don't know, those are weird.
The thing is their demands ain't all that out there. Just better working conditions, not having to be work. Stuck working sixteen hours a day for ten days straight.
Yeah, no, I don't, you know.
No, the overtime is nice, but after a while.
I don't anticipate it's gonna turn out, but I'm like.
Like Bobby Hathmore, I was one of the reasons why he left.
Oh, no, he let yours go because of that. I think they might get it off, but it was not.
Yeah.
That's, that's gonna happen, I think. It's not gonna. Be bad for them.
Once you, once you get to your ten year mark, it kind of gets a hard belief.
Mm-hmm.
Once you get that ten year mark.
Kinda stuck, yeah, yeah.
Try to do another career.
I saw a thing today that they're gonna, they're stopping paying their health insurance to come up on board.
Yeah, and once you hit thirty-five, unless you're military. The military gives you three, three years.
I'm telling you, you can't transfer. I don't know. I think that's gonna be a big, big for a lot of them when they're out, they'll not get in there in a year or so. If they don't get their health insurance, it's gonna be paid for. They're gonna have to, a lot of them are gonna have to go back. That's a big, or they're gonna cancel at least. A big gambling, yes, a lot.
Yeah.
Well, it's good. Nice to. Player.
A year, yeah. So it's like, you have to pay that. It's a lot. Actually, three thousand dollars if the warranty happens happening, maybe neither. Do you exactly know how they can do that? Like, I just read online, they said they were doing that.
I don't think she can legally do it. It's probably not in the contract. They, she, they could fight it. They should be showing them being sued over it. Problem is she keeps closing these prisons. They keep letting inmates out quicker than. And half these guys would go right back in anyway. They go.
Nope.
It's like some of the cops I know in the city, they don't stay there. They left. He says, I blessed you for something. You're out on the street before I get done with doing the paperwork. Not even worth my time and effort either.
Well, Chester, who we can have that attempted drug trafficking, the shop for it laws, they have to ready that out. Meanwhile, I don't know, stole a car in an accident.
Yeah.
At the center.
There's not many parts of the penal wall that you get put in.
It's just the nature of the state where it, I mean. Came to our training last week to talk to us about. I guess she was always supposed to conduct. She was there that day to talk to people that are in jobs. I think she was behind, they said she was already scheduled. She's very short. I don't know. I don't think I've done myself a thing.
That can't do that for a career.
Mm-hmm.
That's a, that's a.
Mm-hmm.
It's a movie that, that movie, that crossing movie, Escape from New York. With the tents around it, both the bridges. Good luck.
There's your prison. It's like the movie Escape from New York.
Yeah, I'm gonna be sad that we weren't training. Trade class, we're gonna tell the trade class, we're about to, we're mostly speaking about dogs. And as well, women, women, she didn't wanna take any classes, they had a record for, she was very able to look down beside. And Andrew Fridge will come up for both of them. I told her she could do a little more to group us to compose, but.
Because you can't go in anything. With them.
Yeah.
Well, you go to precinct, that's like three blocks away.
You know, it's all run there, halls there. I'm just going out with Pesci, I'm just gonna sit.
Ain't nothing down there I wanna see anymore. You just gotta out of Times Square once in a while and. Took the kids to the museum, Patrick history, they had to see that and I took them to the battleship. We were good to go. Yeah, and that thing doesn't.
I can walk around a lot, I've been walking a lot of time, going to like art college center and St. Patrick's and. All that stuff like that. It's cold stuff. It was also brutally cold last week.
Hmm.
And we. I don't even wanna walk, or walk though. It's probably a good, but part of the car because the wind. Was so bad in the place and I remember, I should've brought a scarf for earmuffs.
Yeah.
If I'd two ears were a break off walking in the wind.
St. Patrick's Cathedral is nice to see once.
Yeah.
I'm not even Catholic, I like it. I'll be impressed with it.
There's a mass one over there for tours. I never actually, I don't, I, I don't remember. I've already walked around all the stations around the back before, I was back there, but we didn't go long to them, but there wasn't tour, so we moved up. Um, that was interesting, all different saints and you'd see them in the back.
Yeah, we're getting there for a few more. They're actually just priests buried in cars buried in the basement.
So you actually could see, I think I took a picture, what was behind it, you could actually see down there, or you could go down there. But you could see. I'm sorry, I took that picture. I guess not.
Station, it does some paperwork.
That's fine.
Yeah.
There you go.
There's no way, yes. Someday you can't do twenty hours, something.
I just want to do that one once you put, put up the D C O. Maybe you're working out a lot of time. Cause you want something to be on the monitor, like, cause we're able to talk to everything, which you don't know. You know, if I find somebody who's other type of job.
Right.
It's just not, it's not gonna work, most likely.
What you're looking for is the retired person.
Yeah.
Or even that person.
Not, not completely wide open, it's just not gonna happen.
Right.
And we don't kind of need to hire a full time person, we just don't.
No. Now you don't have to have any dog complaints. Biggest thing that you guys need anymore? You need a new control officer. That's more people complain about, right? This and everything. I'm like, you live in the country. Leave them alone.
Mm-hmm.
Good luck. Just we just didn't have the time and we have, we have that all the time.
Yeah.
They work the day shift.
Mm-hmm.
You work at work for them, they have some form that's installed.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Is it attacking anybody?
I think it's all in the like kennel requirements, like. It's hard to, we don't have, we don't have any protection, it's like. With all the guidelines they have, right? You have to hold them.
Yeah, I mean, hell, I need a spot in the garage where there's no heat.
No.
Yeah, we, we used to, yeah, we got rid of our pad that we had here.
We have one in hallway, but outside aren't really around, but you can't use it. It has to be temperature controlled.
It has to be climate controlled, yeah. For a while they, they were taking them to War Service, right?
Yeah, they just, if they answer.
Yeah.
On the walk, yeah. That's my bad day, there was a two dogs, like, hmm, and I said, I'll just keep it in my yard and we plan to run it back to them.
I know they were trying one time years ago, worked something out with Doc Roderick, something happened and it didn't bring it out.
Yeah, well, something.
Somebody that told them.
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody made a mess.
Yeah.
Well, the sheriff was in the village.
Generally how that happens.
Only sheriff was in the village, didn't have it, it was like.
I don't know.
It was one idea, it was.
Yeah, but Portervis and Lockell, they decided in the middle of the night, she just get fold.
Yeah.
Or they just won't answer. And Tabelkill has, does have a kind of like community near the police department, but they won't guard those.
If I have a Connex trailer.
Yeah.
Out in the.
On the, on the side, yeah.
That we leave, like with the signs in there.
Mm-hmm.
And the gator in front of it, and they just move stuff when they need to get to the signs. And then then you could have move cars over and then have a spot for a. Nine by six.
Mm-hmm.
Kennel.
Yeah, but then you have to have somebody clean it up.
It's not that hard.
It cleaned it out.
Yeah.
I just opened the door.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
On a hose.
You got, you don't have heat in that, right?
That's the problem, there's no heat. And I even said, we had heat. And they say it kicks on, I mean, we'd be able to do it. If we had something that you can kick it on, that it would stay on, we just set it for like fifty degrees or whatever. But if you had that, those radiant heat that you've seen. Kick on at four in the morning. Kick off around six thirty. So it brings the temperature up a little bit. Kicks on at two, kicks off at four. This way the cars are warmed when the next change comes.
Yeah.
And if you have a doggy man, you just, alright, we'll kick it on, that's, that's where you. But you put the, the temperature sensor on top, or like the middle of the kennel.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Just say the heat's coming down.
I don't know where else we could put it, we can't, I don't think we would have a town hall, highway hall, it's not like that.
No.
So if nobody had access to it.
Yeah, they ain't got a place anywhere.
No.
Right, so, and if I had.
If I say heated, that's totally happening, nowhere. We don't have anything.
If I had a Connex.
Yeah.
Right there, right with those two speed lines in there, with the heater in. That gives me two parking spots.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wouldn't you think that wouldn't work even if you hold it down, I'd say that's in the basement, if that would work with seaters and stuff, so we'd be able to hold it down.
No, I didn't know our basement.
Yeah.
No. Your drainage, even with the subcon drainage, it's not.
No.
No.
There it is.
Cause it is, or is heat somewhat, but. We just don't.
Your locker room's just staying pretty dry, right?
Oh, yeah. Cold, cold.
In the front.
We put a couple of electric heaters in them.
Yeah.
But it's just not.
The, the cinder block.
Yeah, it's.
You get near that, that outside wall.
When you're staying.
I know we put one heater in the ladies room, the lady part, but.
At the youth center, where we have the blackboard.
Hmm.
There's that door. Does that go, you know what I mean, in the front of the youth center?
Yeah, that goes.
That goes in the basement.
No.
That's a basement on that side underneath the youth, with the double doors there.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, that goes into the ba, the front basement. There's two basements in that building. There's a front basement, huh?
The pool building?
Not pool building. Oh, the pool building. Oh, that, that's.
But that's going to the.
That, that goes into the power lane.
Okay.
That's where they keep the tables.
Okay, same rooms tables, okay, that's what I was trying to figure out.
But now, the community center.
Yes, I know.
That's where the double doors, that goes into the.
That's the basement, I was thinking of, there's no way, there should be no way to buy that.
That's where your furnace is, that's where, yeah, everybody was storing stuff.
Yeah, but I, I don't think, I haven't been down here in a while, but I don't think there's much stuff left down there for storage.
Yeah.
Um, cause most of the people restored it.
They probably could add stuff down there to tell the trash that. The old school.
Cubs got used to it down there, but I think that's all that now.
Yeah.
We're still there, we don't use it.
If you got. I think the one that we had was.
Literally you have stuff in your side, right?
Football has stuff in the front side, but I don't think that's, I think the.
Six by six, I think is the count. Six by six by eight with the top on it.
Something to put in the budget for. Yeah, I wish your thoughts about that in the morning. I had somebody ask me, a resident about it, I don't know, I don't think it would be very expensive. I don't know what you, how. What you think about it, if it really would have to put in your department, like a silver registry, like for seniors, like for.
Remember.
Mm-hmm. Can we talk about it next evening?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, we, we do have, it was like a logic.
I was wondering if they have too much of them, because.
Matter of fact, when we were at the station, I'm. Touch the.
She's on the bike, isn't she?
Oh.
And she's. I'm not trying to show you, I just don't wanna say that loud.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But she's on the bike.
I wonder how this'll feel.
I can't play dirt, you're supposed to be off.
I don't get that anymore.
Oh, you don't?
Well, it's kind, cause you only get a percentage of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
My salary is very, so. But like, one of the town guys, I was walking across the park a lot, we slammed on the brakes. You want me to do it? Like, a couple of years ago.
Right now.
I'd have invited it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I get three quarters, now I don't get nothing.
Who shovels out the lumber, are you guys still doing that?
Oh, the town, the town came with the plow and then we hit it in between with the gator.
Okay. I was just gonna shovel, I was over there one day and it wasn't shoveled out in front of the youth center, but I'd been trying to shovel and.
Oh, we just did, the guy, I'm looking, he was like, guys, the gator. Well, screwing something up.
It's just that I always go back to gym, they don't sell, you can rent it, you know, and so.
Well, the.
I just threw a bunch of salt, which is probably a bad idea, isn't it, I'm not sure, but that must be different salt they have there because.
You may have safe salt.
It's the green stuff.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
I just threw that to melt it.
It's, it's safer walking in the, on the floor.
Yeah, makes sense in the gym too, especially going on sick, but.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
You gotta get the, the hardware store and get washers and a cotter pit.
Oh.
It's not for the, the plow and the gators.
The brush and the.
The shoe cable.
No.
Really tells me, you know, and I found, like, I looked and I'm like, where, where'd it go? And then I find it laying on the, like, nicely on the floor.
Chucked it in there.
Like, I put all this stuff over here and I know.
It wasn't there.
I know I didn't put that there.
Yeah, the dark one out there was just like swinging it in the wind, right, and throwing some stuff up there.
And I, I snapped the three eighths inch steel pedal. You know, you can only pull that winch in so far, right? Or keel snap.
Yeah.
It's, and then still kept the finger on it and it was wrapped underneath like three other layers of, ah, do that.
Who knows?
We had guys do that to us, with wrenches in the fire traps. I'm like, how did you get, we tell you, when you do it, always hold tension. And watch it, walk back and forth. I'd come up there and that kid thinking, what the hell? Well, we try, nobody's holding tension, you gotta hold tension.
So I went quarter inch, nine thousand tensile strength, synthetic. I got it on there, I held it up, it's got a nice hook. Nice metal loop, right, so there's a ring, but it's all got twine. And then there's a big, big hard rubber stopper, four bolts. The cable to the winch control, if you could open the door and look out or watch the winch, the thing would probably come up and you're like, okay, it's up.
We have looking for, it's not, I would jump.
Somebody winched on that thing so hard that the U, the loop, got in the wall. It hit the fairlead rollers, the ball blew apart. And the metal U got in the road and then crushed. The, that thing had to be begging for mercy.
Stop, yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Okay, so that's two that are not allowed in that stuff.
Mm. Go over, we talked about something.
No, no, because. You wanna have something broken, just give it to the cop.
I was guessing that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
It was like dealing with Kyle, amazing. Yeah, see how far I can get this foot.
Oh. I don't know, my mother-in-law was saying something, I'm like, why does Thomas have a brother, it's like, does he wanna have cars? In the garage, like, you have a drive-through, like.
Yeah.
Especially the ice, you gotta loosen it or something.
Oh, yeah. And I'm gonna, um.
I'm not sure.
I think as the generations went down, everything just got watered down and.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh, I think my fault was that I handed them too many.
Yeah, well, I agree. I do that with my kids, I hand them too many. You know, just like Johnny, you know, he goes to home. Normally we were able to claim on our taxes. But this year he made over ten thousand or five thousand dollars if I can't claim it. I'm like, alright, I'll be bringing the change. If I can't claim any of my taxes, then I don't mind you living here, but. You're gonna start helping out.
Alright. Hey, here's your first car.
Yeah.
I had bought the biggest shit bought.
Yeah.
Bought it all and I could see the ground, the road going by.
The only thing white one.
Mine was five, again.
I had a Dodge Rammy.
I had a Chevy.
A Dodge Erase.
A seventy.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-one, seventy, or seventy-two Chevy Nova. And it was a hatchback and if I went through a puddle too fast, I was getting wet.
Yeah.
Why did something have an outcrack seat that you go around, which is probably helpful for your car, if the ground turns too fast, your engine would, would just.
The only thing my dad helped me out with was my first insurance payment, the down payment, which I had to pay him back. That was the only thing he helped me. It cracks me up, my, my first start driving, car insurance, the whole year was only like two hundred and fifty dollars. Now I pay that a month for three vehicles, but you know, it's like.
Arguing today, telling them that my insurance can't cost you days maybe, or some, I don't know. And he tells me, you can't cost that much, I can get it on my own, I was just like.
Right?
Good luck.
Absolutely.
Cause I wanted to get my charger, my extra charger.
Mm-hmm.
I can't. Mason kills them.
Yeah.
Um, so when you're finished with school, we're gonna say you lived at your grandmother's house. And then like, so I can get my charger.
My mother's house, it's angry, she was, I know, I want to do that. Could've went with that, cause she doesn't.
Right.
I think you did.
Yeah.
But it will miss, then so. It's for most of.
There's no need for their insurance to be that high either.
Well, it's, well, I said too, once he's done, it shouldn't be honest. Where it's honest.
I'm supposed to stay another year, have fun, because you found out you can do the Disney college program, which you need to be a student, you can learn. But you have to still be enrolled, so it has to like. It does have a really good program.
Yeah, yeah, cause uh.
And you could transfer more than sixty credits, some you could just, you can't graduate because you got your done, but you can stay and just take another, I think you can transfer seventy-two, seventy-eight. It does have a good program.
My friend Mike and his daughter, and now, now she's got a full-time job there.
Yeah, it sounds interesting, so.
Yeah. I don't know, it's, it's. Tell him if he wants to work in that, I'm okay with him, I'll have my hand, just torture him. There was a people up there.
Oh, actually.
With the, uh, sales.
Okay.
For this, all those shops.
Yeah. I wanna work, I don't need to find one that I'm retired and work at just now.
You know, I found. I don't wanna do this part, just because it's so hot.
Well, that's true.
And I don't like the heat.
I don't like the heat. I found the Disney box, it's really happy.
Well, they had, they have a security, they have a canine unit.
Yeah.
The canine unit makes more than the, the Orange County and the, what else is there?
Osceola area.
They, their canine officers make more than the police. They, their canine officers make more than the police.
Police service is unfortunate, I have to very far, I'm not paid very well. My mother is in some to catch, which is a couple of, four minutes.
Mm-hmm.
So we're forever.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no, and the retirement there is different.
Yeah, they don't, it's like that, it's, it really isn't one. They don't get, I don't think they get that, I don't think they, or like, it's not the same, except they have all, not all.
From my work in Tennessee. Long County.
I've heard of that, so it must be bigger county.
Long County, Tennessee. He retired from the nurse office. And I don't even know what his retirement is. But now he works for the, the city and the county.
Yeah, they must not get anyone here. Well.
Because one of the things, yeah, you go down there with Westchester County guys, uh, you know, talking about salary here, like cause they had the troopers with us, and we all go down there, and that was one of the rules, we're not allowed to say what we make.
Yeah. I mean, I had a friend, he was in the fire, she was nervous. She was, I don't know, it was a nervous, a heart, she was personal, she was scared, but she was able to, like, fight it too. She said she often made more working on Dito. Than she did. Cause some people's like, you know, like, you know, nationwide wages.
Yeah.
But she made more than I made at the hospital, as a nurse, crying.
My wife, my friend's wife does the traveling nurse.
Mm-hmm.
She
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And my buddies, his daughters, his dad, they, they got actually a lot, they went to Alaska for a couple of years, they enjoyed themselves, it was
My mom's English father is a retirement comedian, like, the team, everybody doesn't have to do this kind of kid. Her neighbor, I think, is, you know, eight forties or thirties, and he's a traveler, not a doctor, really, I'll just, but a traveling person who does, gets action.
Yeah.
He's all of those, like, bought a house down there in a travel community, cause he's from travel. They have a motorhome, so when he goes
Yeah, that's
Get racing to a motorhome.
That's
Or camper, we're, I don't know, it's a travel motorhome, but
So they bought a house in South Carolina. And they had a camper tow behind.
Mm-hmm. I think it's my, so I can use a car, but it gets to go to work.
But now she takes the motorhome, because they pay for your lodges.
Yeah.
So it's just like, well, they pay you, like, the, me, the average hotel, or whatever. She takes the motorhome, and then she pockets
That's like, that's why my mom's name is, he said that, and he has all of his own, I think he has a pole behind, so he's like, I have a little stuff, and I'm empty now, so I get to pocket the food section, too.
And she always looks for a, for a campground close. And she does the, uh, Uber.
Mm-hmm.
Or takes a cab. They even put one of the electric bicycles on the back.
She's using a bicycle.
It's a neat way to go, to drive around and do stuff, which you can, you don't have luck, then you jump away about. And then he'll go down, like, meet up with her.
Hang out for like, the weekend, and then he's like, alright, we'll go home and, uh, check with my bees.
There you go.
And he's retired from, uh, Uber. Alright. Be Irish for the day.
There you go.
March twenty-second. Alright, well, you all have a
You too, see you next Monday, I'll see you before.
Yeah. Better be out, fuck that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the pump is still hanging in there.
Oh, is he?
Yeah. I don't think he's gonna make it much longer, basically.
Yeah, cause he already had some kind of imagination before, for the more years, right?
Yeah, they removed the park was long last year, a year before.
And now he has them on your both phones, right?
Yeah. And this kid needs Phil.
Ugh, how old is he? He's not
I don't know.
I don't think he's as old as some of the other
No.
So he was born in nineteen thirty-six, so I thought he was, yeah.
My dad, he was born in nineteen fifty, he would've been seventy-five this year, so
Didn't I thought how that, I think like the cardinal stuff, or the cardinal here anyway. And the prees have to retire at seventy-five, they just don't have that for the Pope, I believe.
They want you to make Pope here, like
Until you can
Yeah.
I remember Pope John Paul, it seemed like, I guess cause I was a kid too, it seemed like he was Pope forever.
Yeah.
And now it seems like they changed so many times. It doesn't seem like he's, I'm actually looking at that. Feels like he hasn't been Pope that long.
Hmm. At least eight years.
It hasn't been that long. Twenty thirteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a month and a half. Longer than, well, before him was all, okay, well, so, not to murder, I thought Pope John Paul had been forever. He was Pope from nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand and five, he was Pope from
Oh, yeah.
And then Benedict was only two thousand and five to two thousand and thirteen.
Yeah.
Oh my goodness, somebody, well, before Pope John Paul.
Yeah, I was doing a real reading on it. Well, not Catholic, but Marina, but
Yeah.
But how they're buried in three caskets, why they're buried each, the
I tried to find that picture, I'm sure you know, I, I know I took it.
Which is, uh, which is neat what they do with the, you know
Mm-hmm.
The ceremonies and Hmm, oh, wow.
Yeah, there's the pictures, well, this is behind, cause you can see the priest is here, and you can see down.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know why you guys ever see that in there, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't taken it, still take the boys down one day, we haven't, they haven't been there, I'll take Marie down there.
Thomas loves Manhattan, he really wants to live there, or go to school down there.
Not me, I I wouldn't wanna work down there, I couldn't.
I'll try to tell him, it's just so expensive, even if you aren't living there, but my dad, he's like, John, I'm still loving
He's gonna go, yeah.
I couldn't, you're in the traffic, you're dead.
Did you miss us?
I wouldn't have known you, I would've known John. The one who was like, someone always
Okay, alright. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session and
Did you grab that with the name?
I will make a motion to come out of executive session.
I second it, I second it.
I'll just word it like this.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to hire the law firm suggested to us from our attorney?
I'll make that motion, we hire the law firm uh, adjusted. Give it to his buyer.
I had something I wanted to add, so hold on a second.
Okay.